Call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Here.
Byning?
Here.
Germaine?
Here.
Lamore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. I ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather this evening, may we use our best skills and judgment and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, first item, please.
The first item is the opportunity to amend the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to include as the last item on the consent agenda, consideration to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 14.
Sir, your honor. Luke Solomon, who is the support? Counselwoman, okay. There's any other?
Who was the support?
Counselwoman Byning. So there's a motion by Councilman Mike Colangelo, supported by Counselwoman Byning, to amend the agenda and list as the last item. It'll be numbered by the clerk following today's meeting to add the collective bargaining agreement, a proposal as stated. So, motion in the second, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Second, please.
The next item is under, oh, citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you. Are there any citizens present this evening which may comment not related to an agenda item? Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none? Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under Council Action, item 2068, consideration to approve funding agreement with the Arthur Lassau Community Center.
Thank you. Well, Ms. Pastu, if you have an introduction.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item here, we had a discussion at our June 18 meeting and made changes based on the dialogue. A significant item that was changed would be found in paragraph two dealing with funding. That was increased to $140,000, which had historically been the appropriation for the ALCC. Also, when we get to the lease, we have $16,000 that would be included for utility expenses. So the appropriation would be $35,000 July 1, $35,000 on October 1, and then the other aspect of it that would be the 70,000, remaining $70,000 would be at the discretion of the city council in whole or part based on tasks identified in Exhibit 8. And then also, the other part is, these are benchmarks that the city council would add, that we would provide, that would report back on a regular basis back to the city council. So that language added as well.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that the funding agreement for, with ALCC be approved.
Second. It's a motion by Counselman Mike Colangelo, supported by Counselwoman Whitman, item 2068, the funding agreement with the ALCC. Further comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 2067, consideration to approve lease agreement with the Arthur Lassau Community Center.
Mr. Pastu, I know there's been some adjustments here as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, from the last meeting, the agreement would have the utility payments, city incurring those up to $16,000. No change there. Paragraph three, we did make a change with the purpose of the building. The one change was, from the June 18 meeting, was dropping Monroe County a proportion of it and replacing it with a broader community. So that was just a small change with that. In paragraph five, language was added to define capital maintenance items. That will be the responsibility of these cities. This would include building, walls, roof, elevator, HVA, plumbing, and mechanical systems. And so defining that, we would be responsible for any repairs above $5,000 related to an ongoing item. Paragraph 14 was added, dealing with the monthly reporting by the ALCC, out of form and template provided by the city. I don't know if the city attorney wanted to talk about that last piece there and reason for putting that in there. I thought it was good and pertinent, so.
Sure, if I may, Your Honor.
Yes.
Honorable mayor and council. So the decision was that we had talked about potentially including more of the funding language over on the lease side or vice versa. The issue is that I wanted to keep some of the things that were in the funding agreement there and some of the things in the lease there, and to keep some of the reporting requirements in the lease. The funding agreement is obviously for one year. The lease is a two-year agreement. And so in the event that something unforeseen would happen, the funding agreement could obviously end after a year and we wouldn't know what would be happening. The lease would remain in force. And so I wanted to keep at least some reporting requirements there in the lease as well.
Great. Good. With that?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with ALCC and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. Motion by Counselman Mike Colangelo, supported by Counselwoman Lamore, item 2067, the lease agreement with the ALCC. Any further comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just a comment. I appreciate Mr. Pastu and Mr. Budz going through and kind of linking the funding agreement together with the lease agreement. I think it turned out to be a really good two sets of documents that'll guide both the city and ALCC in the future.
I appreciate it.
I guess I'll add, I think, also the outreach with the ALCC board and their discussions there. Really unifying how some of our agreements, like agreements, when you talk about the Sawyer Homes, that was mentioned before and others, that really brings things back in the consistency throughout, which I also appreciate.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I also wanted to-
Byning, I'm sorry.
I also wanted to thank the staff here at the city, Mr. Pastu and his staff, as well as the ALCC board and staff. We've been with our lease for some time, so we're very excited to see this come to pass. Thanks to everybody who helped to get us here. It was a lot of little details we had to take care of and still a lot more work to be done, but it feels like we're on our way. So thank you.
Any comments? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 2076, Monroe Fire Department Cadet Program.
Mr. Pastu, any comments or?
Yes, at the last work session, the council received a presentation from Chief White and Liam Carroll with Schoolcraft Community College regarding a fire cadet program. It's a dual enrollment program in which high school students can simultaneously receive college credits. Upon completion of the program, the student would have a firefighter one and two certification. The intent is to expose students to the prospects of a career in the fire and related public safety services. You know, as we discussed last time, there was a Monroe resident who was enrolled in the Ida Schools that has expressed interest. A condition of the participation in the program from a local, a condition of the participate station in the cadet program is sponsorship from a local fire department. There is attached resolution authorizing the fire chief to establish and maintain the cadet program. Came up for discretion. The city will not incur any cost for educational component for the program. Our expenses would be limited to a couple of shirts for the student identifying as a cadet with the Monroe Fire Department and providing turnout gear. The turnout gear is part of our, the training with Schoolcraft College and ultimately be returned back to the department upon completion of the program. The turnout gear is from our existing inventory. As we discussed, there's no obligation on the part of the city to hire the student upon the successful completion of the program. And then lastly, Lieutenant Scott Schmiley would be assigned as the liaison and mentor for the cadet. I guess I should say, the one thing I failed to do is to forward it on to Mr. McNue with the ISD just to, you know, have his thoughts and comments related to that. We do have the resolution for council for consideration tonight.
Your Honor? Counselwoman Lamore?
Yes, I'd just like to note that we need to amend item 2076 to read Schoolcraft College rather than School College.
Turn the line under the header, just a clarification so it's complete within the location. Just as we reported, that is Schoolcraft College. Other comments?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution establishing the Monroe Fire Department Cadet Program.
Second. Motion by Counselman Mike Colangelo, supported by Counselwoman Lamore, regarding item 2076, the Fire Department Cadet Program. I do have some comments regarding this program. First, I'm gonna start off with saying that, you know, I support the idea of having cadet programs both in all of public safety and fire and police. I think it's the opportunity to find people to have an interest in public safety. Unfortunately, as I reviewed through this, I did ask, and I know Mr. Pastu will still follow up with the ISD to confirm that that's something that will be supported because that requires the diversion of the funds from the high school in which the student attends will have to be then contributed and agreed to, to be sent to Schoolcraft College. As we talked about this at the last meeting, there was discussion whether it be cost or not. This does clarify it a bit. At least it's not an educational component cost, but there is a minimal cost that was stated by the city manager in his update, and it was clarified. As I look through this and I think about the opportunities, it does provide the student the opportunities. It also may provide the city opportunities, but there's a meagre large gap between that happening and employment for a variety of reasons. One is the timeframe which the student gets done, what our requirements are in hiring firefighters. While they have to be fire one and firefighter two certified, there's also other requirements that are asked, being a paramedic license in the state, you know, hazmat operations, level certification, CPAT completion, but more so, in our current hiring practice, you have to be a paramedic as well. And that's not gonna get us here with this proposal. I, so I think there's a gap that's there that I have challenges with. I think that we have, this is a side note, we have many police officers, several, that also need to go through firefighter one and firefighter two, who are currently employed that have not received the training. So if they haven't already received the training, but we're gonna send a student that may, in the future, when they become of age and have these other certifications, may get hired by the city, but I'm sure they'll get hired somewhere, if not here. I'd like to see the attention on our police officers that were hired in as public safety officers and see that they get trained and that the equipment and turnout gear gets used now as opposed to maybe five years from now or four years from now, depending on the age. So I think while I support cadet programs and think we need to have that discussion, I think this falls short for me and for the length of what will be beneficial. I think there's ways to get there. I just don't think this is the way. And it's not because of Schoolcraft College. I think they're a fine university and college. I think they do great in this arena. I'd like to know that, one, we're gonna get it funded first as well. So those are my comments. Why I'm not gonna support this. There's no other comments?
Your Honor, I have-
Counselwoman Byning?
I have a question, if I may ask.
Sure.
Are there, do you know if there's officers who have a desire to be trained as paramedics that have not had that opportunity in our-
Police officers or firefighters?
Police officers.
As paramedics?
Mm-hmm. Those who have fire one and two training, are they not having access to paramedic training?
The PSOs, no, they're not. But Vince, I don't know if you wanna answer?
I'll let Chief White take the first shot at it.
Honorable mayor and council, Rob White, chief of the fire department. This is a, the officers that aren't trained as firefighters are going to get the training. It just hasn't been made available yet for them to get it. We just sent a class through. Actually, we just graduated five police officers with the fire one and two training.
When was that?
April. But as far as this cadet program, this is just a, just a way to feed the fire service with more candidates, trying to make them interested in firefighting. We are going to reach out to the Monroe School Systems as well, just to try and, I mean, I wanna get as many kids as I can involved in this, in this program. I think it's a great program.
Your Honor?
Your question is, I think Counselwoman was, if any of the public safety officers in related to paramedic, correct?
Yes.
No, not paramedic. No, they're not trained as paramedics. They are at MFR level. There are some that are trained as MFR level. But we can't, as far as the equipment goes, you have to license the vehicle. The people on the vehicle are paramedics, so the vehicles are licensed to the level. So we would have to bring all the patrol cars up to paramedic level to have them operate as paramedics.
So as MFR, they're medical first responders they are trained at, but not as paramedics or EMTs?
And we have some that are, that we, we've been working towards that.
So I'm just trying to understand, training students wouldn't affect officers-
Not at all.
-that offered that training?
Not at all. This is, this is a dual enrollment program through the, through Schoolcraft College for fire training. Monroe Community College doesn't offer fire training yet. They do offer, I believe, they're starting an EMT program, which would be great if we could get, you know, kids involved in that as well.
And then if I, if I may ask?
Yes.
If, if you had students complete the fire one and two, they wouldn't be eligible to apply at Monroe Fire Department because they don't have the paramedic training?
Yes. Yeah, they have to get their paramedic training as well, which is about another year of training.
Okay, but they could-
Yes.
-continue on in their education.
And these are kids that are 16, 15, 16 years old. They wouldn't be allowed to apply anyways. They, so they have time, you know, to build it up. They can start as juniors, I believe, in, in the program, get their fire one and two as a junior, and then possibly, I'm hoping, to look at the paramedic level or the EMT level at a minimum, get them EMT trained while they're in high school. And they're gonna be miles ahead of everybody else.
And our PSOs here in Monroe, they have the opportunity to train further into their paramedic status if they want it?
No, no, we aren't offering, we're not offering that level.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Just wanna clarify, I wasn't, my point wasn't that, I do support the idea of having a cadet program. It's just it has to have a pathway toward, there's results and benefits. And while it benefits the student and could benefit it in the future, there's a gap between that and how we hire people within the fire department. My point with the public safety officers is, they're police officers until they get firefighter one and firefighter two trained, and we have multiple police officers that haven't received that training. Now, the chief tells me there's five tonight, tells us that are recently completed. So how many are pending?
Max, is it three?
Three.
Three. Three that still have to go, and they'll sign up in the fall for the, for the Monroe County.
Okay.
So they, they are given the opportunity, all of them are, and they have to actually as a condition of their employment.
Correct. Thanks.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from council?
Just a brief one, Your Honor.
Yes, Counselwoman Felder.
I guess the short of it would be, this is a case where I would see that, that you shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I'm not opposed to a paramedic training program for dual enrollment, though that might be a little advanced for the age groups that we're talking about. But essentially, it advances, it's an accelerated program for the schools to get these students into the field, into a career that they could be working in one or two years sooner. I mean, the entire point of the middle college is, is to graduate college sooner. A lot of the, you know, it has a medical and a STEM focus, but a lot of the reason that many of the students are there is to shave off a year and tens of thousands of dollars in, in post-secondary expenses, as well as getting a job faster and, and becoming involved in, you know, in the labor force that much sooner. That has an economic impact on whichever community they choose to serve. And you were right in pointing out, Your Honor, that they would not be tied necessarily to the city of Monroe if they sought to work elsewhere, and that they would still need to complete that paramedic program. But that doesn't mean that this is a bad thing just because the other thing is a good thing. Let's do a paramedic program then. Let's have a police cadet program then. Let's, we can do all these other good things, but they don't need to be, they're not mutually exclusive. And that's all. Thank you.
Other comments? There is a motion in the seconds. Item 2076 regarding the Monroe Fire Department Cadet Program with Schoolcraft College. Is that correct? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
No. Next item, please.
The next item is item 2078, approval of SEMCOG planning grant Telegraph Road Corridor.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. City administration is requesting council acceptance of SEMCOG multi-jurisdictional planning grant focused on Telegraph Road. The project involves the city of Monroe as lead agency, Frenchtown Charter Township and Monroe Charter Township. It'll also involve participation with the county road commission, Michigan Department of Transportation, Lake Erie Transit, and the Monroe County Business Development Corporation. The project area begins at Dunbar, Dunbar Road in Monroe Township, proceeding north through the city and terminating at Mall Road and Frenchtown Township. All three jurisdictions have expressed willingness to participate in the grant. It's a feasibility of a multi-jurisdictional quarter improvement authority that looks for improvements related to traffic flow and safety, identifying pedestrian and transit improvements, address redevelopment opportunities and challenges along the quarter, improve aesthetics, identify recreational connections with existing trails in the River Reason. The period for the project would be July 1 of this year through June 30 of 2019, which is a reasonable time period. I put in there also that the project cost is $50,000. SEMCOG would be providing a grant of $40,925 with the initial application. I was looking at $50,000 from SEMCOG and $12,000 local match. So I have a little concern that we might be on the light side. We've subsequently had some discussion internally about approaching not only the townships and, but also the road commission and Lake Erie Transit to participate in the funding to get a good source of money before, for the project itself and improve certainly the quality of it itself. With that, first step, I just recommend that we proceed with approving, accepting the grant and going forward with that and working on the details with finalizing the funding and also the securing a special service agreement for a consultant to handle the project.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we, that we approve the pass-through agreement between the city of Monroe and Southeast Michigan Council of Governments and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on our behalf.
Very good.
Motion by Counselman Mike Colangelo, supported by Counselwoman Germaine on item 2078, the SEMCOG planning grat, grant. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is the consent agenda, and for approval of payments, item B, the amount should read $495,373.86.
Very good. Are there any items on the consent agenda the council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda the council wishes to have pulled for discussion? I would ask that item 2073 be pulled. Any, any further items? Seeing none, a motion will be in order.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counselwoman Byning?
I'd like to make a motion that all items not pulled from the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and resolutions carried out.
Good. More, motion by Counselwoman Byning, supported by Counselman Mike Colangelo, that all items on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion, be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Colangelo?
Yes.
Byning?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item.
The next item is item 2073, consideration to ratify collective bargaining agreement with Monroe Firefighter Association.
Thank you. I pulled this for a couple of reasons and asked a couple of questions as well, 'cause I know that we've, are getting all of our contracts reviewed, which is well appreciated. I know as I look through this one, there's a particular item that's included on this that's not on all the others contracts related to residency. So as we, as we've, as it's been brought forward, obviously, this agreement, as it's written, is a collective bargaining agreement. But on the residency, I just have a couple of questions for the city manager so we can make sure we all understand where, where this is gonna fall. And just so, for those that may not have it, under the residency, it says, "City agrees to hold the 20-mile residency requirement in advance for a period of one year following final resolution of DTE's appeal of the 2018 property assessment on its coal-fired burning plant." We understand that. So my question is, is this gonna be in the contract, just for clarity for everybody, or in a letter of understanding?
There is language in the contract as it is. I spoke with the labor attorney, and he would have that in the contract itself. I think I indicated that I thought this would be as a letter of understanding. So from a clarification standpoint, he had indicated it is in the contract as it is now. Language would be in there as well. And again, part of his, discussing it with him this afternoon, is that it is tied to the appeal with DTE for their property assessment. I think, you know, certainly from my end of it, there's two factors in play with that. One is certainly the DTE uncertainty and how that would affect. And we've talked about public safety in a broad sense, both police, public safety officers and fire, probably at the most risk because of, they represent the largest portion of the general fund. And then the other part of it is, is just holding this till we determine how the public safety study will eventually go forward with that as well. So from that end of it, I'm certainly comfortable recommending that we continue with this, at least the language as proposed.
Okay, 'cause we had that discussion, so I wanna make sure that council had that information where it was gonna fall. I guess the follow-up to that, since it's in the contract, that it'll, it's not specific employees in the fire department currently that this will address, but it'd be eligible for all employees, including new hires? That's my question.
I think it's just limited to, I think we've got a couple of recent hires that would be affected by this, and then potentially any hires that would come on board if you're within the 20-mile residency requirement. Now, it wouldn't give you a pass to go outside.
Okay, that's how I see it, I read it. But, so you're saying there'd be the two employees in question and new hires?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that the way it's in the agreement is, right now, it provides a one-year period upon hire to find your way in within the 20-mile residency requirement. And this would be consistent with that, just the exception being DTE appeal and the uncertainty that goes with it.
Okay. So I guess I have some comments, and I'll see if council has any comments or concerns. We do need to fill vacancies. I think we recognize that. I don't think anybody here, both on the police side or the fireside, including the council and the residents, with the vacancies that we do have. I think there's some items that, that kind of inhibit that at times. I talked about it the last topic that I didn't support, because when you have a level with paramedics required, within hiring, your pool's gonna be less. Therefore, then the pool gets larger, and then we have an opportunity that we're hiring not locally, but we're are hiring from those that might be further away. So my first question is, do we have any police officers? This is the only, is this the potential to see this come through on the request of a change in the police contract? Do we have that situation there?
No, not in the, that kind of, either the PSO or the command contract.
Okay. So there's a reason why we have 20 miles. Of course, that's callback and response. I guess I would have liked some additional information or clarity from the chief if we currently run into a situation for those that are outside the 20 miles and their ability to respond, or maybe they have responded, I don't know, because it's about public service to the community. And the contract does allow a person to live outside the 20 miles until a year after the probation ceases. Of course, now it'll- I'll take comments from anybody else.
Your Honor, I guess my comment is that, you know, just taking a look at the data, I can see why the fire department wanted this provision in the contract, because during the last series of layoffs as a result of the recession, it was the fire department that was laid off. It wasn't the police department, so I can see why the police department doesn't have a concern, whereas the fire department has a concern. And then if I were a new fire department candidate and I accepted a job in Monroe and I have one year to move in, but then I also know that DTE is contesting the tax base valuation and if it, depending on how the results come out of the tax tribunal, there may be pending layoffs. As a young professional, I'm thinking, I have to sell my home, move within 20 miles, but then at the same time, there's this cloud hanging over everything that I may not have a job. So I can see why we may need to accommodate this. It's kind of a reflection of what's going on right now with the community and with all the uncertainty that's been put into this community by Detroit Edison. It's just one of the unintended consequences of what Detroit Edison, what their tax request, their application before the tax tribunal. It's one of those impacts that's now being felt. So we kind of have to manage it in some way. And I was hoping, I think we all talked, that this would then mainly a memorandum of agreement, not necessarily in the contract, but if we're getting advice from our labor attorney that it's best to have it in the contract, then I defer to his expertise. But I just think that this is just a indication of what is going on as a result of Detroit Edison. So.
Thank you.
That's all I have here.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Other comments? There is a motion, I'm sorry, there's not. We haven't, I'm sorry, clerk, did you take a motion?
No, there's no more.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to, that we approve the, ratify the collective bargaining agreement with Monroe Firefighter Association.
Motion by Councilman Michael Angeli, supported by Councilwoman Vining on item 2073, ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Monroe Fire Fighters Association. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Michael Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
No.
Next item, please.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
It is July. Let's start back at precinct one. Councilwoman Whitman, any comments?
I, yes, I do. I would like to think, I'm trying to remember the name of them. There was a list of unions that came with Mike Smith out to Paula's House and they built a bus shelter out front. It looks like a little dollhouse, you know, to keep the women and the children, not just to keep them safe from the elements, but it also keeps them farther back from the highway instead of standing as close as they were. And the United Way was involved and it's just wonderful, the things that this community does for others. And I'm sure that everyone heard, well, we heard about the ALCC receiving $100,000. Paula's House also received $100,000. And the River City Center for the Arts received, I think it was 73, 78,000 for, you know, their building. So I think that with the theme that city council has and where the city of Monroe is going with wanting to be more historic and restoring our buildings and keeping the buildings that we have currently up to date and in good working condition, that this has been a fine statement of what can be done. And I'm proud to be a member of Monroe County, you know, not just, not just because of Paula's House, but also because of the direction that city council has taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Angeli?
Your Honor, this is mainly a public service announcement that I want to ask the police chief to kind of go over with the community what the requirements are for fireworks for the Fourth of July.
It's a good question.
Let me share with you, I got my first call today regarding this. I think there's probably three of us had that on earlier.
I have a mayor and council, Charles McCormick, chief of police. So it's that time of year, as long, as well as every observed holiday in the state of Michigan, right? The day before, the day of, and the day after, all, I can't really probably tell you what isn't allowed, because, I mean, from mortars to M80s, they are allowed. Some communities have done restrictions from the time of night. I've seen, I've seen different ordinances from like midnight to 6:00 AM and the like. But the day before, the Fourth of July, the day of, so that we have the Third, the Fourth, and the Fifth, fireworks are allowed, you know, all the mortars, the big ones that go off in the air. So obviously, and I'm sure to be echoed by the fire chief, it's been very dry, very hot, very windy. So it would take special care to, if you're going to do such, to have a, you know, certainly prepare your yard or whatever, to put it heavy as best you can. Maybe even keep a hose ready, a bucket ready, and a phone ready if ours is needed, so.
Chief, just so, because we see a variety of places where people decide they think it's good to light off fireworks. I know, I think it was last year, the fire department actually responded out to a field fire, or maybe it was the year before, but not on public streets and...
Correct. Correct. We do have some areas that like to do in the street, but obviously they should be done in property in a safe manner, always being aware of your surroundings. You know, we ask people to be as courteous as you can be. There's some people who just don't enjoy them. Personally, I understand the Fourth of July, if we're going to let out fireworks, we just, I'd just soon let them off that day, you know, and not the weeks following, because then it won't be okay. But that's generally when the complaints come in. It's the next weekend and the weekend after when people may not have went through everything they had during the Fourth and continue to light them off, so.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you. Counselwoman Vining?
No comment, Your Honor.
Counselwoman Germaine?
I just want to say everyone have a safe and happy Fourth of July. Don't drink and drive and don't drive a boat drunk. Be safe. But have fun.
Thank you. Councilman Lemoore?
Everybody in City of Monroe, please have a safe Fourth of July. Practice restraint when you do practice using fireworks. Be considerate of your neighbors. That's all I have to say.
Counselman Felder?
Two brief items, Your Honor. First, I'd like to thank the Commission on the Environment, specifically Barry Leroy and Brian Egan for helping out with the grant that was approved in tonight's consent agenda for the River Raisin volunteer cleanup. We are expanding cleanup this year. It's going to be on the 21st of July, Saturday, larger than in years past, and I'm just really looking forward to that. It was great, it was a lot of hours for them and it was great work to get some money from the state to do that. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, on wrapping up your year as SEMCOG Chair and representing Monroe up there at the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. Apart from that, everyone have a safe and happy Fourth. Just be respectful of your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments, just to follow up with Councilman Felder, on the river cleanup, the River Raisin Legacy Project. It is on Saturday, July 21, 9:00 AM to noon, and they're meeting in Soldiers and Sailors Park is the start point. Some really neat flyers that are out. You can go to theriverraisinlegacyproject.com to look into that further. And just such a great article today in the Monroe News as well regarding the things that are going on with the river and area concern and all those items. So as Councilman Felder says, great work being done by Commission on the Environment and those that are participating. Hope to see a lot of people out there. The next item we have is the Monroe Citizen Survey. And there was, should be well aware, we've announced it before, but there were 2,500 randomly selected locations within the city that residents that received the survey. But also, the survey's going to be available online through July 13 at 8:00 AM. And opportunities for anybody to go on to the city's website, monroamy.gov, and to fill out the survey. We, as a council, as we all know, we've talked about our goals and objectives. The current council established the goal to increase citizen engagement. This is one of the items that we're asking them to participate in and provide the input. Returns are good at this point, but we think they could be much even better to get over that amount, that we really feel you have that solid core of input that you can develop some strategies and plans around. So the responses are anonymous, so you just send in your thoughts. We are looking for, obviously, there's things that we do that may need assistance on, things that we want to improve, we want to hear that. We also want to hear the things that we're doing correctly that you think we can even accelerate beyond as well. So I always like to see a balanced report of what people are thinking about in relation to the survey. So please, by July 13, go online and fill out the survey. Would be appreciated. The only other thing I had on the fireworks, and as the chief said, not on the streets or public places. We have the parks that were, I don't know if it was a year, maybe even two years ago, that some people want to light them off, very dry conditions as they are again. And then you have fires that the fire department and the PSOs have to respond to, and it could be hazardous. Please be safe, enjoying the holiday over the three days. Last item I have, and the city manager and I just chatted briefly, and so that's, I'm just going to look as we get into the next work session or so, kind of an update on the public safety assessment. I know that we talked about that, that we're not far off the timeline that we're looking for. And I'll look at the issue for report today, unless you want to say something. But we put that on the agenda for a future work session, whether it's the next one or the one after, so we can get a, stay on schedule with that assessment.
I can have that for you at the next meeting in detail.
Excellent, thank you. That's the comments I have. I know that clerk has some comments. We had a work election commission meeting, but I'll turn it over to Clerk Treasurer LaVoy.
Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that we mailed the first batch of absentee ballots last Thursday, and I'm happy to report that those seem to have arrived at most of their locations. Sometimes we're not sure, we have sometimes some mail issues, but people are returning them. However, if you believe you should have gotten an absentee ballot, please don't hesitate to contact clerk's office and we will get you taken care of. I also want to remind everyone that we will be closed on Wednesday. However, if you have a city payment that you'd like to make, we do have the Dropbox and we encourage you to utilize that if you're close to a due date. That's all.
And Clerk Treasurer LaVoy's made available a parking space for those that may be returning their ballots, that they can drop them off and walk right in. There's a 15-minute park sign for that, so we can keep that turned over for the residents who want to come in and turn in their ballots and then can get right back out. Thank you for doing that.
That's right, they went up today, so those spots are available.
Excellent. Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had two items. One is kind of echoing the comments with the ALCC. Certainly have appreciated and enjoyed working with the ALCC board. They're really committed and I'm grateful for the effort that they're making toward that, and so certainly excited about the prospects going forward. The other thing with it is, is talking about separating the funding and the lease. That was Mr. Cochran's idea, which he deserves credit for suggesting that. I think it was a good idea to do those separately and I think it worked out well. The other thing with it is, and I'll put it probably more in just a written update to council, but one of the things that's been very striking is the number, or the reduction in high grass complaints. I was commenting this last week, boy, I don't have any, many property owners complaining about a neighbor's high grass and nor am I getting any complaints regarding the individuals, property owners, getting high grass citations. Long and the short of it is, the numbers are substantially down, and I think it's a reflection of a lot of the good work coming out, certainly with the Community Development Department, Mr. Green, Building Department, and our code officers providing additional notice. So when I send those numbers out to you, they are substantially lower than where they have historically been. And I think it's, a lot of credit is due to the effort of the department in communicating those problems further in advance. If you're getting calls, let me know, but I guess I will tell you that the numbers are substantially down from where I was two years ago, and certainly this last year when we did the delinquent tax notices. I guess historically, we had a lot of complaints and had next to nothing for that. So I just want to give credit to the department for the good work that they've been doing, so.
Any citizens' comments? Any comments from those present here this evening? Any final comments? Bless you.
Thank you.
Any final comments from those present here this evening? See you none? Motion is over. Motion adjourned?
I'll say it.
Okay. There's motion by Councilman Lemoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Michael Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lemoore?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We're adjourned.